Good morning and welcome to the Standing Committee's meeting for Wednesday, May 25, 2022. Due to staffing shortages, virtual attendance is unavailable this week for council meetings and hearings. Council meetings will continue to be live streamed on the city's website. Our first order of business is roll call. Will the clerk please take the roll?
Reverend Burgess.
Here.
Mr. Cockill.
Here.
Mrs. Gross.
Here.
Mr. Kraus. Mr. O'Connor. Mrs. Kail Smith. Mrs. Strausberger.
Here.
Mr. Wilson.
Here.
Mr. Lavelle, Chair.
Here.
Six members present.
Thank you. Our next order of business is public comment. I would like to remind all speakers that the rules of council state that comments are limited to matters of concern, official action, or deliberation which are or may be before City Council, and profoundly will not be permitted. After you have called, please restate your name and neighborhood for the record. You'll be given three minutes to speak. Our first registered speaker is Joanna Lemon.
Hello. My name is Joanna Lemon, and I live in the Regent Square area. And I also work for the Student Conservation Association, which is a national conservation organization that works to inspire young conservationists through hands-on service of the land. I'm here in favor of the Amendment of Ordinance 0369-2022. And I just wanted to speak a little bit about why I'm in favor of that. With SCA, the Student Conservation Association, we employ 50 high school students each summer working in the city parks and green spaces through the Partner for Work Learn and Earn Initiative. I'm also here as a member of the Outdoor Inclusion Coalition in Pittsburgh, and we're working to establish a gear library and camping education program in the city of Pittsburgh. With the passage of this amendment to the ordinance, in close partnership with the city of Pittsburgh and Director Vargas, we hope to establish the first Pittsburgh gear library in access to urban camping in Riverview Park and hopefully eventually Frick Park and other parks. The Outdoor Inclusion Coalition Gear Library will provide gear and outdoor recreation training for both young people and their mentors. Through urban camping, the gear library and training programs will make a difference in advancing equity and inclusion in outdoor spaces in Pittsburgh. When the Student Conservation Association asks its young employees, our high school employees, "What is your most memorable moment of your work season?", usually they say, "Camping with my friends." Every year, we take our youth camping as a way to connect with nature, teach leadership skills, and just have fun. We travel pretty far to Allegheny National Forest, or sometimes Ohio Powell. It takes a lot of dollars, a lot of gear, and weeks of planning. The SCA can afford to do this because it's built into our budget, and we know that the benefits outweigh the costs. Having access to camping without needing transportation, or gear, or a large budget is something that should be afforded to organizations and families in the city of Pittsburgh who may otherwise not be able to have this experience. Now more than ever, Pittsburgh city parks are being utilized as an escape from everyday life as we continue to navigate the consequences of the pandemic. We find ourselves looking for opportunities to go outside and recreate close to home. By making this change to the wording of the ordinance, you will be making a big difference in the lives of young people and families in the city of Pittsburgh who will participate in this new initiative. Thank you for your time and your consideration.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Marcus Schaffner.
Good morning, everyone. My name is Marcus Schaffner. I live in Lawrenceville. It's a pleasure to meet you all. And good morning to Pittsburgh City Council. Thank you for your time this morning, and thank you to Bobby Wilson for introducing this bill and legislation. I'm the founder of the Outdoor Inclusion Coalition, which is stated before, which is a collective of 100 organizations spanning governmental, for-profit, and the nonprofit sector that collaborate to support the push to make the outdoor industry more inclusive and equitable through policy, mentorship, and accessibility. I support and find the Ordinance 2022-0369 a vital piece of legislation to support equitable opportunities for residents to recreate within our city parks. The Outdoor Inclusion Coalition's mission is to support community members in seeing themselves in outdoor spaces. The movement for outdoor representation and exploration starts locally, though. As a community, as a state, and as an industry, if the vision is to see more historically marginalized individuals recreating, that must start through localized initiatives that expand the opportunities for residents to have a first and a long-term experience engaging with the outdoors. Upon the passage of Ordinance 2022-0369, the Outdoor Inclusion Coalition will have the ability to collaborate further with city representatives and community residents to address the largest barriers to camping, which include quality gear, educational how-to-utilize such equipment, and proximity to camp sites. Through community participation, we believe that this opportunity will further facilitate a greater appreciation for our shared natural amenities and the natural curiosity for children and families to utilize the vast array of recreational amenities in not only Pittsburgh, but the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania. I urge you to vote in favor of Ordinance 2022-0369. Let's work together to reimagine the outdoor recreation landscape, to encourage residents to experience camping experiences in communities that they love. Thank you for the opportunity to speak, and I look forward to answering your questions.
Our next speaker is Valerie Ann Beitschner.
Good morning. My name is Valerie Beitchner, and I'm the president and CEO of Venture Outdoors located at 317 East Carson Street. I'd like to thanks Councilman Wilson for introducing Ordinance 2022-0369 aiming to amend city code to allow for camping in public parks. I'd also like to thank the entire council for their consideration of such an important topic. Venture Outdoors is a 20-year-old nonprofit headquartered in Pittsburgh. Our mission is to inspire, educate, equip. We remove barriers and create access to outdoor experiences. Our organization has had the honor of creating over 800,000 outdoor experiences alongside 100 dedicated volunteers, introducing participants to a cadre of events such as kayaking, canoeing, fishing, climbing, caving, hiking, and more. Core to our mission as a nonprofit and to all programming and experiences with Venture Outdoors is equity in the outdoor industry. While outdoor places and spaces are created for all, many members of the community remain alienated and feel unwelcome. Our work to change that is core to our mission and a focus of our partners in this space. We are proud to host the Outdoor Inclusion Coalition, a cohort of over 100 nonprofit and for-profit organizations and individuals within the outdoor and environmental fields working toward an inclusive and equitable industry. This ordinance represents a critical step forward to creating opportunity for outdoor wellness for all Pittsburgh residents. As we've continued to see the effects of the global pandemic, our work has never been more important. So much of our programming, particularly our youth programming, has shifted focus in the last two years to better provide outdoor experiences tailored to combating the effects of COVID-19, including stress and anxiety. A 2017 scientific review in the Journal of Pediatric Nursing found that access to green space was associated with improved mental well-being, overall health, and cognitive development of children. It promotes attention restoration, memory, competence, self-discipline, improves ADHD, and was even associated with higher standardized test scores. The benefits time spent in nature are endless. However, not every child can experience these benefits. Studies conclude that environmental injustice affects the lives of children from public schools in urban contexts who reported less contact with nature during lockdown. One can surmise that any additional pathways we can provide to families for outdoor exploration will greatly benefit the health and wellness of our communities. We recognize that Pittsburgh can be a model for additional cities in an effort to create pathways for exploration, beginning with urban camping. This is particularly important as localized recreation initiatives play a vital role in the exploration of natural resources across the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania, public lands, and national parks. I sincerely thank you for your time and look forward to seeing you outdoors.
Our next speaker is Naomi Mullen. I believe we have Ms. Mullen with us today. Our next speaker is Millie Sasse. I also do not see. Our next speaker is Elena Zatsoff. And then our last registered speaker is Dr. Ronald Lynn Miller.
Dr. Ronald Lynn Miller, Bell Souver, Reykjavik, Iceland. Global Intelligence Society, U.S. National Candidate for the Presidency in 2024. CZSIi.rlm.Globalintelligence@gmail.com is my primary contact email address. I'm a member of the American Society for Microbiology, among many other associations. A concern of council is for Pittsburgh to be the best city, to be supreme, Mr. Ganey, greatest city. Mr. Ganey and Ms. Kail Smith, at all, you are Pittsburgh supremacists, U.S.-American supremacists. They want to be the best, right? Another city council concern is the longevity of Pittsburghers. One, longevity is positively correlated with low-stress telomere damage protection. Meditators, martial artists, live longer, so come martialize with us via the Tao, the Alge, Shanti, Naal, way of the understanding, penetrating body-brain. That's my version of martial science arts. I think Lee didn't emphasize the brain enough. Two, longevity is positively correlated with high kinesthetic motility. Dancers and individuals who move daily, minimum of one mile, 1.609 kilometers a day, live longer. So come move with us via the Rondos, which I founded, the dance-music group that fuses bhuto, angoma, samba, and flamenco. Three, longevity is positively correlated with low somatic adipose tissue density. Thin people live longer. So come eat with us at Shanghai Inn, African cuisine, zoros. A suggestion from me, high butyrate, small-framed portions, proteins, carbohydrates, fats, mix, 1,500 calories a day. This is like a Japanese-influenced diet. They live the longest in the world, and they're also very short. Number four, longevity is positively correlated with shortness of stature and intelligence. The Fox O3 gene correlates with that. Shorter humans live longer than taller. Shorter means less cellular mass, fewer cells to go wrong via epigenetic DNA mutation. Shorter means less skeletal ligamental joint strain over time. I'm a short guy. It's an evolutionary advantage. Jesus was probably four feet six, five feet tall for Beethoven. I am a short supremacist. Who wants to be tall? Well...
That exhausts our list of registered speakers. Is there anyone else in chambers wishing to speak today? Please come forward. Is there anyone else wishing to speak? Ms. Brown?
My name is Yvonne F. Brown. I live in Hill District, 715 Mercer Street. I first want to start off yesterday that I want to apologize if I said the N-word, which the Sergeant-at-Arms told me that that's considered a cuss word. It's in the dictionary, and I was not calling anybody. I said, "My father taught me what a N" and said the word, but I usually just use the N-word. I was explaining this against about my grandchildren. I'm trying to let you know, I teach them how they're supposed to respect when they come here and anywhere else. And they think that the N-word is a cuss word because we do not say it. And as far as swearing, sometime I heard them, the TV's on and the babies are watching TV, and I might hear a swear word. I go in and I said, "Ah, turn it, turn it." She said, "Auntie said we can hear it, but we can't say it." Now, I'm telling you, I come down because there is a problem down here. And yesterday, I'm telling you, I protested. Ms. Smith was wrong. When she hit the gavel, when they hit the gavel, you have to stop talking. And you could see, I was surprised. I said, "What? What, you cut me off?" I said "Nigger," N-I-G-G-E-R, I said the word, and they're saying it's a cuss word. Who made it? Where's the list of words that I can't say? It don't make no sense. If it's in the dictionary, and then I've learned from Mr. Dr. Miller that in Africa, the word Niger is spelled Niger. We call it Niger. In the country, they call it nigger. They call their country. And I see, what's getting me is that you don't understand. I've been coming here 20-something years, and they ain't got so that I can't even speak. I can walk through here, Mr., the President used to be, Kraus. I'm talking to the veterans. I'm handing the crippled man with no legs the agenda. I said, "This is something." "Mrs. Brown, I'm running the meeting." I said, "Leave me alone. I'm telling you, this is something." And my husband said, "Let me tell you something." My husband hated me coming down here. He said, "You going down there arguing with them white men." But the other day, when I went in his room, he said, "Yvonne, I've been watching The G." It's about the government. He said, "Yvonne, when you going down here and telling them..." That's what the man said. "This is our, this is my country. We make the laws. We, the people, you're supposed to listen to us. You don't know, you don't know nothing in my community. You would not know what's happening. Why can't we come down here and tell you?" But when I come, and Ms. Smith, and one time I said, "I love her," and I do, but I'm looking at her, she treating me just as bad this summer, especially this big yellow man, Mr. Burgess. And I hate to do that, but when I look at him, he said, "My baby can't, five years old, it's not the time and place." She's been coming and speaking all these years. She watched City Council. She knows she can speak.
Thank you. Is there anyone else wishing to speak? Please come forward. Provide your name and neighborhood for the record.
Hello, everyone. My name is Flora. I'm an evangelist, and I love everyone. I'm an 82-year-old lady. I live in a senior citizen. We have no security. I just don't know where to go, but if someone would just speak that word to a right person and get it out in the atmosphere, that we don't have to live in fear. This woman was 83 years old. Somebody went in her house, beat her. Three weeks ago, she's still in intensive care. I'm afraid to go to the laundromat because I don't know who's in the building because there's no security to check you in or out. I don't know what to do. I'm at my wits' end. We should not have to live in fear. If God let us live to be 80 years old, we should live in peace. Thank you very much for listening.
So if you would give me information, mostly in our senior cities and buildings, we are replacing security guards with video. So if you give me your name and information, though, I'll give you, if clerks, just make sure I get who you are, and we'll find out who's managing your building, because you're absolutely right, my sister.
Thank you so very much. A little piece of paper, I'm going to write my number down.
We don't want you to be here.
Thank you very much. God bless you. God bless you all.
Is there any further speakers?
I will bring it up so I don't hold that thing back.
If none, that moves us on to our Standing Committee's agenda. Our first committee of the day is Finance and Law, which is chaired by myself. Our first deferred paper is Bill 308.
Bill 308, Resolution Authorizing the Issueant of a Warrant in Favor of Julie and Kirby Christie and their Attorneys in the Amount of $50,000 relating to the Full and Final Settlement of a Case filed in the Allegheny County Court of Common, please.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Affirmative recommendation. Bill 309.
Bill 309, Resolution Authorizing the Mayor and the City Solicitor to Enter Into a Professional Services Agreement with CSI Corporate Security and Investigations, LLC, for investigative services related to the Fern Hollow Bridge incident for an amount not to exceed $17,500.
Motion to approve.
Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Affirmative recommendation. Bill 343.
Bill 343, Resolution Authorizing the Issueant of a Warrant in Favor of Flaherty, Fargo, Rogel, and Amick in the Amount of $100,000 relating to the Full and Final Settlement of a Case filed in the Allegheny County Court of Common, please.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Affirmative recommendation. Bill 344.
Bill 344, Resolution Authorizing the Issueant of a Warrant in Favor of O'Brien Coleman &amp; Wright, LLC, in the Amount of $30,000 relating to the Full and Final Settlement of a Litigation filed in the U.S. District Court for the Western District of Pennsylvania.
Motion to approve.
Discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Affirmative recommendation. Bill 345.
Resolution Authorizing the Mayor and the City Clerk on behalf of the City of Pittsburgh to enter into a professional services agreement with Max GoPlyworth to conduct a statistical analysis of current voting patterns in the city at a cost not to exceed $7,700.
Motion to approve.
Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Affirmative recommendation. New papers, Bill 358.
Bill 358, Resolution Authorizing an Interdepartmental Transfer in the Amount of $260,000 from Personnel, Salaries, and Wages, Department of Public Works, Bureau of Operations, to Personnel, Salaries, and Wages, Department of Public Works, Bureau of Environmental Services. This transfer is necessary to allow for the hiring of 15 seasonal part-time loaders to assist refuge collection services.
Second.
Question? Councilman Wilson?
Yeah, I just, I see the directors here, and I just didn't know if I could just get an understanding. Is this just something typically that we do every year? Or is it unique to this year?
Chris Hornstein, Director of Public Works. Not unique to, unique to this year under evaluation moving forward. This is a little bit of background. The Bureau of Environmental Services has, in the Department of Public Works, has the highest incidence of employee injury and lost time. And so, you know, when we looked at historic staffing levels, they've been higher than they were previously for permanent positions. And we feel that because when those were reduced, it's actually caused us to work more overtime and then, which is resulting in more injuries. We're still exploring all that safety information, but as a way to mitigate that as an experiment, we are going to hire the seasonal loaders to help increase capacity and reduce the amount of overtime and extra work that's being performed in the Bureau.
Okay, thanks.
Further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Affirmative recommendation. Bill 359.
Bill 359, Resolution Providing for the Creation of the Lead Safety Trust Fund and for Setting the Conditions for the Deposit of Funding into the Account and for Expenditures of Said Funds.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Any discussion? Councilman Cockill.
Lead Safety Trust Fund. What kind of money are we talking about here going into that?
You want to ask me?
If you know.
You know, I assume that this would be part of the rollout plan for the Lead Safety Law. And I think we have, what, Patrick Cornell's here?
Hello, Council. Patrick Cornell, Deputy Director in the Office of Management and Budget. Just, you want an explanation?
Sure, sure, Patrick. I guess I'm just thinking, what type of, how much really money are we putting in there? And what exactly will it be?
So initially, there is $2 million approved as part of the American Rescue Plan from last summer, that allocation that we have structured in such a way that those funds can be used into this trust fund to pay for things related to the Lead Safety Ordinance. Director Kinter has things lined up with training for general contractors. That'll be the first thing to really move out of this. That legislation should be coming in soon. And then beyond that, it's just things, you know, as referenced in this legislation.
Okay, it's not necessarily earmarked for anything in particular other than, you know, the contractors. I'll be taking the course myself, but, so it's $2 million. And as far as helping the contractors or educating the contractors, is that what we're doing?
Yes.
Okay, okay. Is it all to be used for that, or we just?
No, there, so there are other, there are other approved sources as in this pending piece. I expect DPW will have to do some remediation work, maybe in city-owned facilities. That would be an allowable expense as well.
Thanks, Patrick.
Further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Affirmative recommendation. That takes us to our invoices. Need a motion to approve the invoices.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Affirmative recommendation. Need a motion to approve the P-cards.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? P-cards are approved. That takes us to Public Safety Services Committee, chaired by Councilman O'Connor. Our first new paper is Bill 360.
Bill 360, Resolution Authorizing the Mayor and the Director of the Department of Public Safety to Receive Grant Funding from the Pennsylvania Emergency Management Agency's COVID-19 Crisis Emergency Medical Services Grant in the Amount of $37,237, and authorizing expenditures for this stated purpose.
Motion to approve. Brief discussion.
Question, Councilman Wilson?
Yeah, I see Chief Ramon is here. Is this part of just some of the money that we're continuing to get from the federal government? Thank you, Chief.
This was a statewide grant that we applied for, and we received the $37,000-some dollars. And the initial thought is to use it, part of it was able to be used for construction, and we're hoping to use it for the new Medicare Force Station at Lafayette and Federal Street.
Okay. Can you just state your name and title for the record?
I'm sorry, I can't hear.
Can you state your name and title for the record?
Ronald Romano, EMS Chief, City of Pittsburgh.
And you said this is, so this isn't for, to reimburse us for like supplies that we use throughout?
No, no, it could be. There were some, there were certain different categories that you could use it for, and right now, how in our list is to just put it toward the construction. $37,000 isn't a lot of money, per se, but it's, a monitor alone costs $35,000. It doesn't, it doesn't buy you a lot, unfortunately. That's all we were granted, you know, it was a statewide grant.
Okay.
And we took it.
Great.
With your approval.
It's great, thank you.
All right, thank you.
Thanks for coming.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Affirmative recommendation. Bill 361.
Bill 361, Resolution Providing for the Issueant of a Warrant in Favor of CI Technologies, Inc., in the Amount of $17,000 for a one-year renewal of the license for IA Pro Professional Standard Software and Related Technologies for the Department of Public Safety, the Bureau of Police.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Question? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Affirmative recommendation. That takes us to Public Works Committee, chaired by Councilman Cockill. Our first deferred paper is Bill 56.
Bill 56, Resolution Vacating a Portion of Forbes Avenue Laid Out in the Associate Congregation Plan, Recorded in Plan Book Volume 1, Page 95, in the First Ward, Sixth Council District of the City.
Motion to lay on the table.
Motion to table?
Are you motioning to table the bill? Okay. Is there a second?
Well, let me clarify that. Is there a difference between motion to lay on the table and motion to table? I am motioning to lay on the table.
I apologize.
I believe it can't come back up.
I think it's, it's, actually, you're, you're holding an item for, you know, in the event that there's an emergency or something you need to take before this item to lay on the table, meaning that you're, you're actually... that you're, you're actually pausing this item. You can bring it back before this meeting or before your next meeting, but it's really just a motion to hold, to put something before it.
The difference is, with motion to table, you need to have the persons, you need to have the people who voted to table it to bring it back.
Right.
You do not need that with the motion to lay on the table. Anybody can bring it back.
I hope Anthony Coghill coming up with a new motion we haven't heard in twelve years.
I'm glad I'm the only one that didn't realize that.
But they're effectively the same. Okay, per our, per our motions, as I'm looking at it, to lay on the table and to table are effectively the same. So, okay. Roll call vote.
Can we have discussion?
Not on the table.
But we can have a discussion for a hold?
Yes.
Okay, but not laying the table? I don't even know what this is.
Reverend Burgess?
Aye.
Mr. Coghill?
Aye.
Mrs. Gross?
Aye.
Mr. Kraus? Mr. O'Connor? Mrs. Kel Smith? Mrs. Strasburger?
Aye.
Mr. Wilson?
Aye.
Mr. Lavelle Chair?
Aye.
Seven ayes, zero noes.
Thank you.
So are we tabling or laying on the table?
Lay on the table, it was his motion.
Put it under the table, what are you?
That takes us to Bill one oh four.
Bill one oh four, resolution authorizing the mayor and director or acting director of the Department of Mobility and Infrastructure on behalf of the city and through the city's Department of Law to adopt certain settlement terms and enter into a settlement agreement with Norfolk Southern Railway, Manchester Citizens Corporation, Northside Leadership Conference, and Rail Pulp Protection Pittsburgh in order to resolve claims arising from the application of Norfolk Southern Railway Company for approval to reconstruct the crossings of the North Avenue Brighton Road Bridge docketed at the Public Utility Commission and from Northside Leadership Conference, the Pennsylvania Public Utility Commission appeal in the Commonwealth Court.
Motion to approve, brief discussion.
Second.
I'll defer to the councilman. I don't know if you had any remarks on this or not.
I do, thank you. Just want to keep my bearings here. So I just want to, first off, thank, thank the council for holding, allowing me to hold the bill until we had our public meeting, which was last night. So it was a good conversation, you know, essentially, we came together with neighborhoods that were, will be affected by this. And ultimately, the whole city would be affected by, sorry, I'll speak into the mic, be affected by double stack trains going through the city of Pittsburgh. And so, my office, Councilman Lavelle's office, and then also Mayor Gany and his office, we came together with the community last night to have a public discussion about what the next steps are and really what this vote, what this vote means today. So, you know, for the past two years, there's been three community groups that have been in, you know, in coordination also with the city, Domi, and also our law department, remediation with the railroad Norfolk Southern for the past two years. And so this is essentially, you know, the vote today is to allow the, the mayor to finalize that agreement. And so, we had that, that public discussion, really, it was really important for me to have that because ever since I got in office two years ago, I've been hearing from the public about the lack of public input. So unfortunately, for the past years, it's been in mediation, so there wasn't that opportunity. So now that we have that opportunity, we were able to go through some of the, some of the details of, of what this means and then also what's to come. So for instance, what the design of the bridge would look like, you know, two bridges, and then also, we were able to discuss some of the, you know, some of the details of, of what comes out of the, of the mediation and what the community groups are, are walking away with. So I just want to thank everyone, especially the community groups that fought hard against the railroad. I mean, it's, it's not every day you see that local community groups are taking the railroad to task on, you know, how it's going to impact their community. And so, really to, to see this all play out where the community is, is walking away with, you know, a substantial amount of, of, you know, a fund that's going to be created, dollars actually going into the fund, and also a historic pedestrian bridge that was, you know, the city overlooked it for years. And it was a, you know, a big part of Allegheny Commons. And to know about some hard infrastructure that they're going to contribute to, that Norfolk Southern are going to contribute to, besides, you know, the, the addition, the, the bridges that need the repairs or the full replacement, which is the West North Avenue Bridge and also the Pennsylvania Bridge. There's also undercutting underneath the, the Merchant Street Bridge. But, you know, this is something the city fought years ago, and the PUC, you know, struck it down, said, no, you know, this, essentially, no, this is, this is state law, that bridges have to be twenty-two feet to allow for double stack trains. The city lost and we, you know, thankfully, the, the community group stepped in as well and said, no, like, we're the people that live here, this is, this is going to impact us. So, I did have one more detail I just wanted to talk about, which is, the state, they also received state grant funding for twenty million dollars for this vertical clearance project. So, the city does, does own the bridge after Norfolk Southern, all bridges after Norfolk Southern replaces them, the pedestrian and also the two, West North and also Pennsylvania. So, you know, this is still something that we're still going to be looking for, to the state for in terms of funding, fifty years down the road, when we need, you know, money to do some of these critical repairs to the, to these bridges. So, you know, it's not something, so at the end of the day, it's not something that, you know, any of us was looking forward to happening. But in terms of the best-case scenario, this is, this is a good one that the, the community really, this is a good one that I see where the community really stepped up and, you know, fought for their neighbors in the past two years. So.
Thank you. Councilman Coghill?
Yeah, obviously, concerns were heightened with the derailment at Station Square with the double stack. So, this is not to limit the double stack trains there. We, we could not stop that from happening, correct?
Yeah, we fought it.
Right, right, right.
The city, you know, the, the reality is that, I'm sorry if you're-
No, that's okay, no, I was just saying-
Yeah, I mean, the reality is that we could be forced to replace it ourselves by the PUC. The PUC, you know, they're not on our side on this one.
They make the community feel good. Did Norfolk have a representative there? No?
No, no, this, this was just an engagement that we had, you know, prior to moving past this point.
Really didn't pertain to the double stack, that, we lost that and there's nothing we could do about that.
Right.
Okay, that's all, that's it.
Yeah, unfortunately, it's even, even the state, the state gave twenty, twenty million dollars. I hope I said million, did I say twenty thousand earlier?
Twenty million.
Twenty million for the vertical clearance project. And also, it's state law for the, so the PUC is looking to the direction of the state for this. And we're also, you know, federal, federal law mandates, you know, the railroad or allows the railroad to even bypass certain rules that everyday citizens have to follow and, and local municipalities have to follow.
Good job in getting the community together. I'm glad I don't have to pull anymore.
Well, I have to thank the community, it wasn't, you know, they did, they did, you know, the brunt work for that. But we try to support them as best as possible.
Need further discussion, Councilperson?
Yeah, I just wonder if we can get a list of who's on the PUC and who appointed them? Because I mean, there's been several things that we've seen our rates increase for residents with water, electric, gas, everything. And we have a Democratic governor and I'd just like to know who, who actually is appointing them, if, if these are people left over from previous administrations or not. Thank you.
Any further discussion? If not, I just want to thank the mayor's office for their participation yesterday, LaShawn Burton-Folt for her leadership, and Councilman Wilson for your leadership on this over the last few months. So thank you. All those in favor say aye.
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 Any opposed? Affirmative recommendation. Before moving on, Councilman Coghill, we need to go back to Bill fifty-six. According to our rules, a motion to lay on the table must be accompanied with a reason to lay the bill on the table.
You know, the director kind of conveyed that to me. I don't have her reasoning behind it, but-
Well, your reason can be, it was at the request of the director.
Okay, yeah. At the request of the director.
Okay. All right, so that'll move us to our new papers, Bill three fifty-five.
Bill three fifty-five, resolution granting unto Hudson Millwood LP, their successors, and assigns the privilege and license to construct, maintain, and use at their own cost and expense to install a subsurface stormwater management facility, storm roof leaders, ADA compliant metal grates, and a canopy at four nineteen Millwood Avenue in the Fifth Ward, Sixth Council District.
Councilman Coghill?
Oh, okay, I'm sorry. Motion to approve.
Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Affirmative recommendation, Bill three fifty-six.
Bill three fifty-six, resolution authorizing the mayor and the director of the Department of Mobility and Infrastructure to receive grant funding from the Pennsylvania Department of Transportation Multi-Module Transportation Fund for the construction of the Savin Avenue Non-Motorized Trail in the amount of one million, seven hundred sixty-three thousand, eight hundred and twenty-four dollars and authorizing expenditures for this stated purpose.
Motion to approve. Second.
Question? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Affirmative recommendation. That takes us to Land Use and Economic Development Committee chaired by Councilman Wilson, one deferred paper, Bill two thirty-five.
Bill two thirty-five, resolution providing for the designation as a historic structure under Title XI of the Code of Ordinances, the certain site known as the Rodev Shalom, located at forty-nine oh five Fifth Avenue in Shadyside in the Seventh Ward. The owner of the property support the nominations.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Second.
Question? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Affirmative recommendation. That moves us to Urban Recreation Committee chaired by Councilman Burgess. We have one new paper, Bill three sixty-nine.
Bill three sixty-nine, ordinance amendment and supplement in the Pittsburgh Code of Ordinances, Title IV, Public Places and Properties, Article XI, Parks and Playground, Chapter four seventy-three, Use Regulations, Section four seventy-three oh four, recreational activities, by adding language that updates camping regulation in city parks.
Motion to approve.
Second, discussion? Thank you. So I just wanted to start off by thanking the Outdoor Coalition. It was nice to, to hear from, from you today during public comment. But I just wanted to take a step back and talk about my own little camping experience, or almost camping experience, whenever I was a, a youngster in Ruyu Park, which was, you know, so this is a bill that would allow the director of Parks and Rec to, you know, by case-by-case basis, allow permitting in a specific location of a park, which we're already kind of, you know, no pun intended, geared up to work with an organization, a coalition that has great opportunities from what I'm, what I'm hearing, great opportunities for youth to, to get involved with, with the outdoors. But whenever I was, this reminds me when I was like, I think I was in first grade, my, my parents like, you're going to go hiking. And they dressed me up in all this like camo gear and I had like a, a canteen. And there's a picture I should have brought today, but we hiked, we probably just hiked like one trail in Riverview. But it was like, you know, the idea of like, we're going to go into the woods and we're going to, we're going to walk through this trail and we're going to have a good time. You know, my dad took me through it, but it was just like, you know, as a youngster, it was just so incredible. And those are memories that I still have. And then I, you know, I continued on and, and did some stuff outdoors and did a little bit of the Appalachian Trail with my sisters. I did like a couple of weeks. And I'm just thinking about, you know, learning about this recently and just how we can expand on that and do something locally and specific to our youth and how we can not only just, you know, have those teachable moments, but also that, you know, that camaraderie or, there's a lot of things that you learn when you're not only doing it yourself, but also as a group activity. And so I just think, this is the type of, you know, legislation that I want to be involved with. And that's why when I, when I initially heard about this coalition, the Friends with Ruyu Park met with me regard, you know, in regards to this. And, you know, Director Vargas has been, you know, instrumental and, and especially the way she sees, you know, she sees her department playing a role. And, you know, I just think this is a, a great opportunity for, for her youth to get involved in outdoors. And, you know, I want to allow, Director Vargas, do you want to make a comment? It'd be great to hear from you.
Thank you. Thank you, Councilman Wilson. And I first want to echo the thanks of the Outdoor Inclusion Coalition, who about a year from now will-
Can you identify yourself in that role? Just your, you know-
Okay, sorry. Oh, that is better. Okay.
Get your name and, and your role.
Oh, perfect. My name's Catherine Vargas. I'm the director of the Department of Parks and Recreation. And first, I did want to quickly thank the Outdoor Inclusion Coalition. This has been a conversation for about a year now, where we've been talking about what it means to create more equitable access to recreation experiences in parks. We had an opportunity to hear models that are happening in Detroit and New York where urban camping is something that young people do and can have access to. And when you think about the amount of wonderful green space that we have in our city, it certainly is one of our best assets. And you think about what young people can actually experience, you know, we might be changing a word and code that allows for us to explore this in the future. But when I think about it, we could be changing the life of a young person who realizes how much they love the outdoors and actually it helps determine, you know, what they want to do for their career and their future. It's a really important relationship to be developed. And, you know, right now, if you want to go camping, you do have to do what Joanna had explained earlier, it's not the most accessible activity. This will make it something that will be accessible for young people to really experience and really just change the way that our, our parks can be used in that way. And I also want to say that the law department has been really helpful in this. The way that the code is being written is very specific to testing this out. It is not, you know, everyone can go camp now. It's very specific to how do we look at piloting camping in our parks? What does it mean? And how do we do that in partnership with others and specifically around the concept of making sure young people have this exposure to, to the outdoors? So I'm, I'm excited about it. I'm excited to be a part of it. And I want to thank the councilman for his support. And again, the community partners that brought this to our attention, our, our department's attention about a year ago. So it's been, it's been a great partnership. Thank you.
Great, thank you. I also just want to take this opportunity, if someone from the coalition would like to, to speak about this, maybe whenever it does, there is an entry point for people to sign up or, or, you know, also talk about the signup, the, the gear lending library and how that plays a part in camping. Are you able to make just a brief statement about that? Be good to just highlight. You say your name and role, although you already did, huh?
Yeah, that's okay. Joanna Lemon, I work with the Student Conservation Association and I'm a member of the Outdoor Inclusion Coalition. So the way that we have this structured is a way that's modeled around the country with this national movement. And so, we would have a gear library, think of it as a library. The gear is free. It's surrounded, really the model is around camping. And being able to provide things like raincoats, rain pants, even hiking boots, wool socks, everything someone might need to go outdoors and feel comfortable. And the model is that people who are interested in doing this, primarily members of organizations that work with youth and family groups, they can sign up for an outdoor leadership training- they can sign up for an outdoor leadership training with us. And so, we're starting to roll out that model at the end of this year, August or September of this year, where an outdoor leadership training will be provided to basically camp with these mentors or teachers, teach them best practices in camping with youth, safety practices, how to set up tents and other equipment. And then guide them in booking this trip, basically, in one of the parks. Riverview is the park that we're looking at first for this camping experience to take place. And so, once they successfully complete the outdoor leadership training, they're approved to take out the gear. They would then work with the city to, and us, to get this permit to go out and camp. And our staff in the coalition would be available to assist them through this process and through their camping trip.
Oh, great. Is there a unified website?
No, not yet.
Okay, but when it does come available, we'll post it.
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Alright, thank you. I... No further comment.
Thank you. Councilman Coghill, followed by President Smith.
I think it sounds great, you know, to open up our parks to children who really don't have the ability to travel 100 miles north and camp like I did when I was a kid. I have my own camping stories, you know. I think some of the best things I've learned in life was from camping and being in the woods with my brothers. Concern I have is camping is not camping without a campfire. Is there campfires? Or is it going to be permitted for, with the permits, to have a little campfire? Or, I mean, what's camping without some mores, Director?
Well, that's an interesting question. That is something, actually, we're still working through the details with the Law Department about. We have permitted at like, there's, we have spaces in the city parks where you actually can have like barbecue grill, that kind of activity. So, you know, those are kind of things that we'd be looking at similar model for the areas that would be designated for this. But, you know, so, it's still, I think what this legislation does is gives us the ability to move forward with the policy. You know, it even outlines that we will be creating policy and working through written agreement. So, that will likely come forward to your table again, the written agreement to allow this to happen. And we're already kind of working on that and that will have like more of those details in there. But it's certainly a conversation and definitely something that we have discussed figuring out.
Sure, sure. Might have to have a firefighter nearby, but you know...
Well, you know, and the Park Rangers have been part of this as well. And there's a potential role for them too. So, we've had, you know, this has been a multi-department conversation, of course, Public Works as well. And one of the issues that we're still working through is that, is that one that you mentioned.
Yeah.
But we will make sure to do it in a safe and responsible way.
Of course. And I love what you're doing, you know. I love your openness to this that Councilman Wilson has proposed and also the city farms that Councilwoman Gross and I proposed to you. So, I really like where you're going with the department. So, thank you for your involvement with that. And I guess there's language in the permitting as to making sure they clean up after themselves?
Yes, so that is definitely part of the conversation around what the MOU will entail. It'll include sort of roles and responsibilities for every party involved.
I'm familiar with Riverview and you got some wooded areas. It's very, very beautiful. Would this, would we limit that to parks like Riverview? Or say, for instance, my moor park? Yeah, we have a field and, you know, would somebody want to camp out in the field? Would we permit that? Or is that judged by case-by-case basis?
So, part of this opportunity is really to pilot what this looks like and how it works. And, you know, there is the opportunity for a concept like this to grow and it would be done in partnership. And I think what this is a good model is of community members. We have everyone from the Friends of Riverview Park, so folks who are invested in that park, to the councilmen and to organizations that do this work really on board with this. And we would want to make sure that should this concept grow, it is done in a way that is in places that make sense and where the community is on board. One of the things we want to be careful about and what makes Riverview a good location, you know, things like noise, things that might, you know, impact residents. We would, those are things that actually make, you know, something like this more possible. So, we'd have to be, you know, that's why in the legislation, it's written in a way where we can actually be selective about what makes the most sense. And we would have to work with, you know, community members and, you know, making sure we have everyone's support before growing this. One of the things I do want to mention though is that, you know, you think about things like the Greenways, which we just turned into parks. You know, there's potential in a lot of different ways, but we would also make sure that we were doing that in partnership. So, what this allows us to do right now is pilot. Each thing that would happen would have its own written agreement, rules and responsibilities, all of the nitty-gritty details in there. And those would all still come forward to council to review and approve.
A good point about the Greenways, you know, I wasn't thinking about the Greenways, but yes, I have plenty of that, which would be really, really great to expose, you know, children to. Permitting fee, do we have a price tag on that?
That would be part of the policies that we're still putting in place.
Gotcha, gotcha. And I would assume, you know, if it's underprivileged children that are, you know, looking to spend a few nights in the woods, that we have somebody maybe pick up that fee or we can give them help in some which way.
This is certainly part of the connection to the organizations that are part of getting the kids and adult mentors trained in this. Yes, it would definitely be the kind of situation where it'd be similar to how we permit for other youth-oriented activities. We are looking at that.
Right, right. Now, that's great. I'm in full support. Sounds fun and educational on top of it. So, thanks.
President Smith?
Thank you. Well, I actually grew up on Fifth Avenue. I talk about this all the time. I didn't go camp until I was almost 30 years old, which was more than 30 years ago. But I loved it. My kids loved it. And it was something we were able to do as a family that was affordable. But one of the things that raises some concern for me is when you start talking about organizations getting involved. I wonder how you're monitoring those. I mean, are you making sure that there's clearances involved? Training of... Because one of the things, we're talking about our own athletic associations who use our fields and our parks all the time, is making sure that our kids are protected. And with everything that's going on, I would rather be proactive in making sure we're taking those steps now. You and I both worked with kids between Pittsburgh Public Schools and the education... I can't remember where we worked.
Yeah.
Yeah. Yeah. What was it called?
Neighborhood Learning Alliance.
Neighborhood Learning Alliance. I couldn't remember where we worked. So, we worked with a lot of kids together, but I always want to make sure that they're first and they're... So, I have a concern because I think, why would they need an organization to go camping in a park? Because that was the beauty of it, is that you could go and just get a permit or whatever you had to do and you didn't need an organization. So, could you talk a little bit about that?
Yeah, I think...
Because you know how I feel about organizations.
Yeah, and at first I want to address your safety question. 100%, there would need to be clearances, insurance, all the things that we require for youth-oriented activities the way we do for sports and other organizations that work with our kids. One of the reasons, you know, and I think it's a... Two, I would actually say. First, you know, the concept that we are actually not just talking about camping. We're talking about equipping families and young people and their mentors with the know-how on like how to camp and the equipment for camping. And then also, you know, especially as we start this, making sure that we have, you know, that every adult has their clearances, that we sort of know like who is camping together. It doesn't mean that families wouldn't be part of that as well, but it gives us the ability to know that, I think even in the code, it says with the right supervision, how are we making sure that we have that right supervision? How are we making sure that we know that we, that folks that are going out to camp have all of the, you know, are prepared and ready to embrace that? It doesn't mean that that model wouldn't change over time. I think to get, really get this started, it's sort of making sure that from a programmatic standpoint, we know that like this is going to be the best camping experience that it can be. And there's a lot of us that are involved in making sure that that camping experience is set up well. And that goes to, again, preparation, having the right gear, having the clearances and the right, you know, adult mentors who have been sort of, you know, part of that. And providing access that way. It doesn't mean that families wouldn't. In fact, part of the model is that families would be able to go out and camp. But then we'd be talking about individual permits and as we put this policy together and work with the Law Department, that's going to be something that we'll have to continue to develop.
So, I'm just going to say I'm thankful that Councilman Wilson put this forward because it is something we have talked about previously in the past when Dan Gilman was on council, actually. So, it's been something that has been bought up many times, but this is the first time it actually came to the table. So, I want to congratulate Councilman Wilson once again for being able to do that and working with... And I want to say, I think Solicitor Kubiak has been running a great law department, really making themselves so accessible to council. And so, I do want to make sure that I acknowledge them and their work as well and yours as well, because I know the amazing work you're doing and I think you're taking city parks into an amazing direction. But I'm still going to say that although I'll be supportive today, I do want to have some conversations about the involvement of organizations and the need. And I think that there's a lot of great organizations doing great things and this sounds like one of those groups. But it's just, in general, I just have concerns when we start putting layers. To me, it's, the beauty of this, if we eventually do it, is that people can go into the parks and camp. But I also want to know how you're going to stop them from becoming homeless camps once we get to that point, because it is a concern. And when you have kids and families camping in the same park, you want to know who's in there together a little bit, just to protect them.
Yes, and I will just say, this starts the conversation, to your point. It's going to be, there's more steps to follow. Anything that involves camping would still come to the table as a MOU legal agreement that would be reviewed. And it also states in the code change that it has to be through written agreement to be permitted, a legal camping. So, you'd have to have a written agreement that's been vetted through law to be able to do that.
I'm just going to add, this is the last thing I'll say, is it's not these laws and rules and guidelines that I'm concerned with. It's the enforcement, which we lack tremendously in the city of Pittsburgh. So, I'll just say that. Thank you.
Thank you, Council President.
Congratulations, Councilman Wilson. I'm happy to vote in favor.
Any further discussion? Before we go to second round, just for my edification, you currently are allowed, camping is currently permissible in our parks, correct? I'm sorry. I'm told that people can't hear me. Camping is currently permissible in our parks, correct?
So, you cannot, you cannot be in the park beyond the park hours. So, different parks have different hours. And then you can't stake like things into the ground or build a temporary shelter within our parks. So, if you look at the language previously, it actually contradicted itself a bit and made it so that like you actually can't really camp in our parks in that way legally. So, it basically says that you cannot stake things in the ground, put up a temporary shelter, do any of those things. And it didn't provide the, even the doorway to have a conversation around doing those things, if that makes sense. So, technically, it did not. And we did have the Law Department look at that and kind of like, if you really want this to be solid, you need to be able to have an agreement that allows you to camp in parks, like actually camp.
I mean, alright. I mean, I know the scouts have done it before and I know others who have actually camped in parks. So, that's why I was curious. I thought it was already permissible. So, with that being said, what we're doing now is you're going to create the rules and regulations by which camping is permissible legally.
Right, and what the written agreement would look like for that.
Will those rules and regulations come back to council for approval?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Second round, Councilman?
Yeah, just real quickly, is that something we're implementing this year, Director?
I mean, it's, you know, the Law Department's already been working on it with us, so we have a little bit of a head start. I do anticipate that we would, our goal would be to get something in front of you like this summer to try and at least pilot this in the fall, if possible, like a one or two time, kind of like let's see how this works.
Yeah, no, I like your approach with the pilot program, see how it goes. I'm supportive. As long as Councilman Wilson provides that picture he said when he was a kid, you know. Canteen, you said, camo, I want to see that. So, we can maybe put that on the brochure, you know.
Oh, that's not a bad idea. At least the Riverview brochure. I'm sure every councilperson would want their own photo for it.
That's all. Thank you.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
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 Any opposed? Affirmative recommendation. Thank you all. That moves us to Innovation, Performance, and Asset Management Committee, which is chaired by Councilwoman Schwazberger. We have our first new paper, which is Bill 362.
Bill 362, Resolution Amending Resolution Number 32, Authorizing the Mayor and Director of Innovation and Performance on behalf of the city to enter into an agreement or agreements with OST Inc. for short-term emergency professional IT staffing resources as needed to fulfill a number of critical IT and device-related projects by revising the budget, year, and costs.
Motion to approve.
Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
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 Any opposed? Affirmative recommendation, Bill 363.
Bill 363, Resolution Amending Resolution Number 374, Authorizing the Mayor and Directors of the Department of Permits, Licenses, and Inspection and Innovation and Performance to enter into an agreement or amendments to existing agreements to purchase a Xella Civic platform and a Xella Citizen Access subscription and cloud hosting services, so as to extend the contract an additional year until June 30th of 2023 and increase the not-to-exceed cost from $1,310,475.13 to $1,331,647.65.
Motion to approve.
Second. Brief discussion?
Discussion, Councilman Wilson?
I figured we were so in person today, which actually, it was a, I don't know. I mean, obviously, the hybrid option is needed, but we were all so excited to see each other that we caused too much commotion and couldn't even start the meeting, so... But I see you sitting in the back there. I couldn't help myself but to ask questions about the Civic platform, which is, is that the one-stop platform?
No, so this, Xella is the Sarah Kinter, Director of the Department of Permits, Licenses, and Inspections. Xella is the legacy platform that we used to use. This is an increase for $20,000 to extend it one more year. And PLI no longer uses the system. Domi no longer uses the system. DCP no longer uses the system. The last piece of work here that has to be completed is moving all of the data from that platform to some other platform so we can sever that tie with Xella formally and be done with Xella altogether.
Okay, I'm sorry, what do we use now?
We use OneStopPGH, which is Computronics Posse is the contract name.
Okay. Alright, great. I do want to ask questions about OneStop, but let's just get the data over first. Thanks.
Thank you. Any further discussion?
Just briefly, not regarding just this particular, but we've been getting a lot of contract continuations and stuff. So, I want to make sure that we're tracking those and making sure how necessary they are that they're not coming back before us for something. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilman Coghill?
Yeah, Director Kinter, I just want to take this moment to thank you for eliminating that games-of-chance licensing. I've already, I think I've told you. I've already had people, you know, say to me, "I don't know what this is, you know. How do I get this done?" That's just red tape I feel like we didn't need and it's already paid off for a couple of business owners in my district that they felt was unnecessary, I felt was unnecessary, and you too. So, and I would just encourage you to find more red tape to cut in the department, so, thanks.
Thank you.
Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
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 Any opposed? Affirmative recommendation. That takes us to our last committee of the day, which is Intergovernmental Fears, which is chaired by Councilwoman Gross. We have one paper, Bill 357.
Bill 357, Resolution Authorizing the Mayor and Director of the Department of Mobility and Infrastructure and the Director of the Department of Finance and/or the Director of the Department of Public Works on behalf of the city to execute unnecessary instruments for the declaration of restrictions and covenants in favor of the Alcasan to permit the installation of green infrastructure projects on a designated vacant city-owned vacant lots, park sites, and right-of-ways as funded by Alcasan Grow Grants awarded to the Pittsburgh Water and Sewer Authority and further authorizing the mayor and Director of the Department of Mobility and Infrastructure and/or the Director of the Department of Finance to enter into any other necessary agreements between the city, PWSA, and/or Alcasan necessary to implement the Grow Grant projects for the benefit of the public.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Affirmative recommendation. That does exhaust our agenda for today. We do have meeting announcements. This afternoon at 1:30 PM, council will hold a cablecast public hearing on Bill 1906 as it relates to the rezoning of the Oakland Crossings development. Speaker Registration closes today at 12 PM. Tomorrow, Thursday, May 26th, at 1:30 PM, council will hold a cablecast public hearing 26th at 1:30 PM, council will hold a cable cast public hearing on Bill 286 as it relates to inter municipal liquor license transfer for Pasha Cafe. Registration will close Thursday morning at 11:30 AM. To register to speak at these meetings, please fill out the signup form on the council meeting webpage. We also call the city clerk's office at 412-255-2138. Lastly, due to staffing shortages within our cable department, virtual attendance is unavailable this week for meetings and hearings. If you are unable to attend in person but would like to submit comments, please submit them to city clerk's office at PittsburghPA.gov. I stand corrected. The public hearing today at 1:30, you will also have the virtual Zoom option. Any announcements from members, Madam President?
I just want to make sure that we understand that, that I am, this is unique only because this is such a contentious hearing and, and people have such a vested interest in, that IMP allowed the union, or planning, yeah, they're allowing planning. The union at IMP is allowing planning to, to monitor and to, to control the Zoom platform, just for this hearing. But I just want to remind folks that Memorial Day is on Monday, and that on Sunday in my district, if you ever see the Mount Washington veterans, do a great salute on 1 o'clock in front of the Duquesne Incline. It's a great, great thing to see. And then on Monday, it's a little bit longer, but the veterans in Sheridan go to all the memorial sites, starting at 10 o'clock at the memorial in front of Langley in Sheridan, and they go to all the other sites in District 2. It's a little bit longer, but just some way to support our, our veterans. Thank you.
Thank you. And I'll simply add that if the public hearing is so important that the union will allow the planning department to manage the Zoom, I think council meetings are equally as important, and the union should thus then allow the city clerk's office in instances like this to handle the Zoom.
So I'm glad you pointed that out. And I do want to say, Madam Clerk has been amazing trying to negotiate and work with the department through this and with the administration. And we'll have that further discussion about it.
I will simply say this. I tend to say this stuff privately, but I'll say this publicly.
Say it to your mic because it's off.
I tend to say this, I tend to say this privately, but, and I've told this to the, I've told this to the Cable Bureau before, that they do not have to exist in this form. The form that they exist in, we choose to allow it. We can choose for it not to allow in this form. We can zero out their budget and create a new Cable Bureau that will directly serve us and our needs. And so as much as I respect them and want them to work with us, they need to understand and be very clear about it, that they operate under council's permission. And if they cannot serve us, we will create a new entity that will serve us, and we have the authority and the capacity to absolutely do it. Thank you.
And with that said, I wish them all well, because they're all suffering, a lot of them are struggling with COVID. So I do want to wish them well, but make sure that they understand that we have a need here, that we, we're going to make sure it's met.
And we certainly wish our colleague, Councilwoman Schwarzsperger and her family well, as they struggle through it as well.
Your, your family just got over it.
Yeah.
Oh, no.
Councilwoman Gross and her daughter.
So we pray for Councilwoman Gross's family as well.
So as you can see, it's hitting our floor really hard.
It's running through the schools, yeah.
Yeah.
Anything else, Councilwoman Burgess?
Certainly, we are praying for the families down in Texas. I won't talk, I won't say much about this, but what kind of world are we living in? When an 18-year-old can walk into a store, buy assault weapons made for military purposes, and shoot up a bunch of innocent kids and teachers? I have been saying this for many, many years. I will continue to say it. No one has a right domestically to have an assault rifle. There's no need for it. We are gun crazy. I'll go further. And at the core of this hatred is the hatred of others, the hatred of black people, the hatred of brown people, the hatred of Jewish people, the hatred of Asian people, the hatred of Muslim people. Part, the gun lobby and the gun manufacturers are the worst drug dealer in this country. They are using guns as a drug to fuel racist ideology and racist fears of division. And now we are having, our children are dying for the profit of these poisonous people. We, what kind of country are we to have these things occur? It should not occur in our country. Our children should not be, should not be victims for the profit and the pleasure of racists and opportunists. So we pray for the family, I, I, we pray for the families of the teacher, two teachers, I think, or two, two adults, and all the families of the kids, and for the souls of the kids, we pray that God will grant them some relief in this awful, awful, awful tragedy.
Need a motion to excuse the absent member, approve the minutes in adjourned meeting.
Second.
Second.
We are adjourned.